The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Tom, we could start with the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Postma.
Present.
Shusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Wala.
Present.
David Quorum, Your Honor.
Nick, Tom, I have number one's a motion adopting the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? carries. Item number two, a motion approving minutes from our May 17th, 2021 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number three, recognitions and awards, we have none. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearing, item number five was a revolution, a resolution, might have a revolution, resolution thus far, public hearing on deferred sanitary sewer improvements. Ann?
Yes, I've been working on this along with Stephen. These are the deferred water and sewer improvements that were completed in the late eighties, early nineties and deferred for 30 to 35 years. We set a public hearing at the last council meeting, sent out letters and published in the paper, and we've had a number of questions from property owners that, some of those we've included you on responses in, and some, I believe there's some people showing up tonight. So the proposed rolls are in your packet, but those would be for work from 30 years ago, and those are the original amounts because we have not assessed any interest on it. I don't know if Stephen had anything to add?
Yeah, I'll just add that back when these projects were completed, there were either empty lots or there were very large, single home lots. So at that time, they looked at these lot, these large lots that had a single home on them and made the determination that sometime in the future that lot has the possibility of being subdivided into two and would create two normal-sized lots. Therefore, that property received two assessments. There was one for the existing home and then one for the empty lot. A lot of times, those empty lot assessments were deferred for a period of time. Many of them have been resolved over the last 30 years, but as we mentioned at the work session when we talked about this a month or so ago, these last 58 to 60 are the ones that have just never been resolved or come to the forefront. So these are real costs. They're costs associated with the frontage adjacent to their properties. And I guess I'll just leave it at that. Just wanted to let you know how these were developed back in the day.
And Stephen or Ann, these are the 1993 costs you mentioned?
As Ann mentioned, yeah, that we have not added any interest to these costs. These have just sat on the books, and Clerk's department has recorded them and kept track of them. So these are the exact costs of back when that project was done. Some, again, were late eighties, some were early nineties.
I'm not sure if that's going to give any of the residents a funny or fuzzy feeling that you got 93 costs here, but it's certainly a public hearing, so we'll give you time as residents to come to the podium and ask questions. But does council have any questions or comments for Stephen or Ann before we proceed? We have a number of residents here who would like to kick us off, or maybe some don't want to speak, some do, but certainly if you could step to the podium, sir, and give us your name and address for the record, that'd be helpful.
My name's Donald Durbin. I live at 2401 12th Street Southwest, Austin, Minnesota. The lot you're assessing, this brawl or spring when your guy come out to mark all the gas mains and the water lines and all that stuff, and the lot you're talking about, you did not even know that there was a water shut-off in that lot. I went and told him and showed him. Now you are going to assess me. He had no record of it. Did you not have a record of it?
Stephen?
Is what I'd like to know.
Can you answer that question?
Yes, as I get the right thing pulled up here on my screen. So...
The narrow lot.
Sir, what are you referencing that was not known? Was it a gas service or what?
Nope.
What are you referencing?
It was a water shut-off.
Okay.
Because my building's on the other lot, and that's assessed for the new street the city put in, and water and sewer. This is an empty lot facing 105.
All right. I'm sorry, I can't speak to that. Water services are typically managed by Austin Utilities. You know, 30 years ago, something may have been installed and did not get documented properly when it comes to the actual location of that water service, and just through that process, as records change, they may have lost track of that. But apparently, it is installed and ready there to be built on for this empty lot.
Well, as long as I live there, it ain't because it's a building, it's a driveway. It's in the driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Durbin. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comments, please? Go ahead, sir. Oh, we got two.
Thank you very much. Dan Moreham. I own some land south of the college. See, Stephen and I, we've had a conversation about this, but these are vacant lots. We bought them back in the eighties. See, they were a sand pit earlier, and we cleaned the area up, filled it up, and these lots have been vacant since. I'm just wondering why after 30 years, 40 years almost probably, we've been assessed, so much money on these vacant lots. I mean, the taxes are right up there. I mean, they're high on all those lots, but it's, it seems like a vacant lot, if it was vacant 40 years ago, it's vacant yet. And I guess I just don't know what else to say on this.
And Stephen, is it something to do with the ability to build on a lot? That's why the assessed value is at the point where it's at?
You know, it's a little bit of two things for Dan there. All good things must come to an end. You know, the city has had these, these again are real costs from a project in 1989, I believe. Eighth Avenue was, sanitary sewer work was done on Eighth Avenue south of the college, and the city has been holding these costs since then, waiting for development. And, you know, from a city standpoint, either we continue to hold those costs, or we assess them back on the property owner, and, you know, maybe that does spur some development. Maybe that pushes somebody forward to say, hey, maybe I might as well get rid of this particular lot and try to see if we can't get it built on. I know Mr. Clark is advocating for infill on some of these empty lots throughout the city, and we think that would be a positive thing, and maybe this'll spur that on. But it's just, back when those were deferred, some were deferred with a time period that said, okay, it needs to be assessed or built upon within 30 years. Some were left open-ended. And again, like we talked about a little bit at the work session, as we have employee turnover here at the city, and we have these 30-year-old assessments, tracking those and keeping track of those becomes very difficult. We want to make sure we get those costs reassigned back to the particular projects, and now seemed like the right time to move those old assessments forward. There's never really a good time.
Right. Thank you.
Right. Is there any... So if I develop those lots, that would be all right? I talked this afternoon with Holly, and I also talked with Fred. Is there any issue with building on those sites?
I'll take that. What did they say, Dan, when you talked with them today?
See, R1, R1 rating, and the, and the only issue was the subsoil, if the subsoil had to be corrected or not. But we backfilled that whole area four feet, I think, in that...
Yeah, generally, that's a residential area south of the college there. So if you were looking to develop those lots for residential, and you were able to meet all the side, lot size and drainage standpoints, that you could move a project forward, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Very much.
Appreciate it. Ma'am?
My name is Carol Brown, and I'm with the Austin Baptist Chapel at 2200 12th Street Southwest. And when the work on 12th Street Southwest was done, the assessments were deferred. That's true. But according to the documentation that I have here, the assessments were deferred and payable when the lots are built on. And I don't know if that's, you're just changing the rules or whatever, the requirements. With our building, we had looked into at one point adding to the building, and with the city requirements for green space and parking, we wouldn't be able to build or sell or subdivide those other lots anyway. So we're just wondering if we can go back to the original, which was deferred until built on.
Mr. Byrum or Mr. Wang, any comment on that, as far as that document?
I'll just say first, and then Craig can add on, but there were probably, and even Ann as well, there probably 15 or 20 different resolutions from this time period, from the late eighties to early nineties. Many of them had different types of wording in them. Like we mentioned, some had time periods, some did not, and it's our thought at this point that we're consolidating, relooking at them, consolidating them all together as one, and acting on them with, in this case, new requirements based on what was passed 30 years ago for this, these properties that are being referred to now.
Anything to add, Mr. Byrum?
What I would say is that I think it's important for everyone to understand that what we're looking at here is a list of things that are out of the ordinary. They are not the normal way that we approach assessments when we do projects. The normal way is to assess these immediately when the project is done, and the council, for whatever reason, and only they could answer the question on why these were done in the years that they were done, thought that they would do something somewhat forgiving to the landowners at that time. But it's not a bilateral contract in that the constituent didn't give up anything or, you know, lose any benefit by allowing this to sit for 30-some years. They were given a benefit by allowing it to sit for 30-some years. So, you know, I understand what you're saying is we're changing the rules a bit, but they were rules that were put in place essentially gratuitously for just certain landowners that are on this list. And the idea was that these properties would develop. That was probably the understanding at the time, that right at the moment, this seems unfair, but when there's a house there, it won't seem unfair, and a house is probably coming in the, you know, foreseeable future here, so we'll let things sit. And we let things sit for a very long time, and it hasn't happened. And maybe that makes it more unfair to change the rules, but it doesn't make it that we can't change the rules. 30 years have passed with these sets of rules, hoping that the development will occur to make it a little less burdensome to have to have this go on the tax rolls and have to pay it off over time. But right now, before the council is a question, do you want to keep these going along indefinitely, or do you want to sort of rip the band-aid off and say, we're going to catch these up because the list is getting long and the years are getting long and the process is getting long?
And as the improvements were made, the entire tax base paid that initial cost because it's still hanging out in the city. We never got reimbursed, so again, it does get borne upon every resident.
The reality, we're not close to that point probably, but the reality is, these improvements do wear out at some point, and then they need to be redone, and it would be a shame to have the assessments from the first installation still be on the books waiting to get paid when the second ones would normally be applied, making it doubly hard for the landowner at that point in time to absorb that cost.
Thank you, Craig. Ms. Brown, is there anything else?
No, I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Casey McIntyre. I live at 1906 25th Street Southwest. I purchased that lot in 2003. Two years later, purchased the adjacent lot, which remains undeveloped at this point. So everything we're talking about happened before I became a landowner. This is my first piece of land that I bought. The second piece of land was the lot that I bought two years later, and I bought that land because I did not want a house next to me, and I still don't. I understand the way you guys are explaining this. It makes sense, if I'm in an understanding mode, but when I'm in an unhappy mode, I have a lot of questions. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but there's a pandemic that's just kind of getting better. And five grand for my family of five is a tough thing to pay. And I know I can spread it over 10 years. That's really generous of you, but then I have to pay interest on it for something I had nothing to do with? That's a hard pill for me to swallow. I don't have five grand. And if I don't have five grand, I have to pay 4% a year, or whatever it ends up being, 3.5% a year, for 10 years because of something that if it was disclosed to me when I bought that land, I would have rolled it into the cost of the lot and paid it immediately. But there was nothing said. There was nothing said. I was completely unaware until I got this letter and read the letter and said, wait a second, they're going to make me pay $5,000 for an empty lot that has a shed where I parked my lawnmower. Now, there's a real difference in equality between the person that lived or that owned that lot when this happened and the current owner of that lot. I wish I had the luxury that that person had to say, no, I do not want to pay that now. I will defer it to somebody else. But apparently, I don't have that option, and that's frustrating as well. I had a mental list, and I'm getting fired up now, and I'm trying not to, but this is just a real tough thing for me. It's a tough thing for my family. I guess I could understand maybe spreading the payment over 10 years, but I have to pay interest on it? I didn't ask for a loan. This is nothing that I chose to do, and I have to pay more than the amount. And you said, you know, just because it's been a long time doesn't mean we can't change the rules. Well, the rules should have been set in stone when it happened. Those people that owned that land should have been forced to pay their share, not me, 40 years later. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Can I respond to something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, ma'am.
So, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes?
I just wanted to explain a couple things, if you're listening.
He's listening.
Okay, so as I sent to the council in an email Friday, what typically happens, these assessments are caught when the properties are transferred. So a lot of times, we do, when properties are transferred, as part of your title work, they will do, whoever's doing your title work will do an assessment search, and the people in my office or myself will certify the outstanding assessments, and that's how these are caught. And as Stephen said, there was originally hundreds of these. A lot of them out in the Austin acres, I see you're kind of out in that area too. So we've caught hundreds of these over time with transfers. Now, however your purchase agreement was set up, however you chose to do the title with it, you know, the city of Austin doesn't know particularly when something's being sold. We just know if there's an assessment search, and we'll certify that to whoever's doing your closing. So, and, you know, however you set up your purchase agreement, who is paying those assessments, who is paying deferred, who is paying pending and levied assessments, we don't know that. So, you know, and we don't have records unfortunately back, you said it was about 2005. So, not to say, just to kind of give you a process how the assessments do typically get caught where a seller would pay those.
Okay, I understand that. To be honest, that's the least of my concerns with this whole thing. I was very green, and I guess I should look at the Realtor that I purchased the land with, but as somebody who doesn't know enough to cover all those bases, I was not coached correctly. If I had been, I would have pursued this, and I would have taken care of it then. I wouldn't have been happy, but I would have been happier than I am today.
Great. I completely understand that. I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of the process that we go through when we get an assessment search and how that is typically caught.
Yes, okay. I do appreciate that. I guess my biggest concern, if I was to whittle everything down, is it is what it is, you know? I mean, over the last year and a half, I've learned to say that phrase more than ever before. It is what it is. I don't have to be happy about it, but the thing that gets me the most is the interest. 3.5% interest over 10 years ends up being quite a bit of money for something that I feel was out of my control. So I would gladly pay this money, five grand, spread it out, and maybe I will be able to pay it by, what is it, October or August 1st or something, whatever the date is. There's a deadline, I know that. Maybe I will be able to pay it if I can scrape up enough nickels and dimes on top of trying to support my family. Maybe that can happen, but if it can't, then I have to borrow money from you guys for 10 years? I have to borrow five grand from the city and then pay interest on it? To me, that is not the correct way to handle this. If you're going to hamstring the residents with this, maybe hamstring's the wrong term. If you're going to surprise us with this, let's give us something, right? I mean, you're basically saying you have to pay this by this date, or you borrow the money from us. I don't believe that that's the correct way to do this. And I know you guys are saying that you don't handle assessments this way, but this is the way this assessment is going, and you are in control of how this assessment goes. This one is out of the norm. This one can be modified to make it fair for the city and for the residents. That's my opinion.
You know, not speaking for the council, but maybe there, because of the uniqueness of everybody's situation, maybe there is some room to, the city hasn't had this money for 30 years, but if there is room to say that this is interest-free at this point, we get something.
Is it possible that we can...
Right.
Just because everybody's got a unique situation. Since this is unique and different than normal assessments.
We could certainly maybe.
Maybe look at that, but definitely money.
If I was someone you guys were, I'd be in the same position.
So I'm wondering, out of all of you, if the interest was dropped, would that fix? Raise your hand if that would...
Help.
...help your situation?
Fix is a strong word.
Not fix, but make it better?
Make it better, you know, also think it would make it hurt less.
We have more time, you know, because we are just, like he said, we just finish up on there.
Right.
And the pastor, they asking about this chapel, we have legal Hispanic community, we just start here, and you pay here with 16 grand.
And it sounds like they're giving you 10 years to pay it.
Right.
With interest, but...
If you opt to pay it, the deadline to pay it in full...
Is August.
It's usually two months from when we got the letter.
But over 10 years, you'd still be paying it in full?
Can we extend the initial date to pay in full?
Okay.
Of August, make it December 30, or the first of the year, or can't? Okay. That's because of tax statements going out.
Tax statement, why it has to be paid by, I think, November 1st, Ann, is that the correct day?
Yeah, we could extend past August if the council chose to do so. The only reason I did it that day is because it's usually a month after our usual assessment. So if the council wanted to say they had to be paid by October 31st, I'm fine with that. But they have to be paid by October 31st for that, for it to get on the taxes for next year. That is the absolute drop-dead deadline.
Hold on, I appreciate everybody talking, but if we could, just to maintain some order, just raise your hand and we'll call on you. So Jeff, go ahead.
So if we, if they wanted to put it on their taxes and pay it over the 10 years, they'd have to let us know by October 31st or August 31st?
No. If they do not...
Right now, I had the assessment deadline per payment of August 9th because that was a month after the assessment. We have another hearing on this. So this is the improvement hearing, and we have the assessment hearing. So the assessment hearing is on July 6th.
Yes.
So that was basically a month after. That is how we typically do that when we do our typical fall assessments. But if the council chooses so, they could push that deadline from August 9th to October 31st.
Okay.
But October 31st would be the absolute last day, or whatever the last weekday in October is. I'm not sure if it's the 30th or the 31st. That would be the drop-dead date to get these assessments to the county.
Mr. Postma?
So, and the...
Oh, sorry, Ann, finish up.
No, that's fine. And the council is not adopting the assessments tonight. They're just moving this hearing forward. So the official assessment rule and terms would be adopted at the July 6th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I'm going to let Tom go because I think he has a problem. I'm going to take a bit of a detour, so I'm going to let him jump in.
And as far as making the decision, the decision is only, do I pay it off or do I not? If you don't make that decision and come in by October 31st to make the payment, it automatically gets spread on your taxes for 10 years based on council's assessment. So you don't have to come in and say, I just like to put over my 10 years. It's automatically done if you're not in paid by that date.
Okay. Is there a mechanism that would prevent the interest from accumulating over those 10 years?
Council's action to put it at 0%. At the assessment hearing.
At the next hearing?
Not at this.
Jeff?
So then, question is, since we have special circumstances here and we're talking about with not charging the interest, is the 10-year period set in stone? Could we extend that to a longer term?
That's a good poke right now, I believe, but I'd be interested in whatever else you might think.
Okay, just to ask Tom.
You can do anything you want. It's been out there for 30 years.
I know.
Put it at 10. Okay, that's 40-year repayment. If you do 15, which is the max we've ever done on any regular assessments, you're at 45 years. It's a...
I understand, but I mean, I guess it is a circumstance where, you know, for whatever reason, a lot of these were kind of lost in the shuffle, so to speak, and surprised a lot of people that caught them after the fact, like Mr. McIntyre. So I guess as much as we could work with them, I guess I would like to see that, but I know some of these people that still own the property should have known that they were out there, but...
This end of the DS, have anything?
Go ahead, Jess.
Yeah, let Joyce go first. That's...
Go ahead.
Is this the entire list of assessments that have been out? No, we don't know until the house sells? Is that what's...
The next item on the agenda is the water ones through the utilities that are the same exact situation. So we got sewer and we got water. We'll talk about the improvements tonight, the assessment hearing in July, as Ann said.
And will those be entire lists, or do we have more that could surprise us?
But they're basically the same properties. Talking about the same properties, there's not...
Same properties, different subject, kind of?
Again, we're not the Austin Utility.
Right.
That money that we collect, we have to give to the utilities.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to jump in because I was able to help with Ann's help a constituent who was sort of similar, and even more recently, he purchased his property like six or seven years ago and didn't know this was out there. And when he purchased it, a lot of folks, especially, you mentioned you went through a Realtor, generally have title insurance as part of that process, and this is one of the exact sort of things that title insurance is supposed to cover. And he was able, we got it so that it's not on his hook at this point because he had the coverage he was supposed to. So if you have your documents, if you know the Realtor that you worked with, it's worth looking into.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm, good.
Anybody else? Anything? Any more from the public? Ron?
Thank you. My name is...
Just name it. There you go.
Ron Mecklenburg. I live at 1700...
Ron Mecklenburg. I live at 1701 12th Street Southwest. I have eight and a half acres that's zoned agriculture. I'm probably one of the only pieces of property in town that's privately owned that's agriculture. I have three assessments that I got noticed that are due. One for $5,673, or 75.25, $4,637.21, and $5,937.99. All right. I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I'm here for the same reason everybody else is. These assessments were deferred. 16th Avenue is on the south side of my, or north side of my property. 17th Avenue is on the south side of my property. Now, I do have assessments on the south side of my property also, in the amount of $22,500 for sewer. So, that's my brunt of all my assessments. I was told back when that project was done, they usually don't call the assessment due until the sewer is used. And I don't use it. I'm agriculture. So, I paid for the house and the street on the north side. And the two, well, there's three assessments on that side. One's for the remaining part of the street going down 16th Avenue. One of them is for the remaining sewer going all the way down 16th Avenue. And one is for agriculture, a lot across the street that sewer was run into. I believe these are the assessments. I did too get a signed copy, actually Stivers Nursery did, from a previous attorney, Kermit Overstein. And it said, "The city will defer assessments on the property described as north 10 acres." It's description of Stivers Nursery. Eight and a half acres known as Stivers Nursery property, accepting the deferral of the present home, which is paid. Said Stivers Nursery property also is included in the rural service district, which until such time is plotted. So, I have one of these agreements, but it sounds like at this time, it doesn't mean much, but...
We'll give you that.
Other than that, I feel these assessments are a financial burden, just like everybody else is here. Since I was, the property was owned into the city, that's what that is about back in 84. The city council at that time saw that that was a burden on that property also. I have the other burden on 17th Avenue. I paid $52,500 in street assessments in 2009, 10, for 17th Avenue. I asked at the time, John Erickson, who was the city attorney, or the city engineer, they were talking about closing off 17th Avenue. And I said, "Well, that would make a big difference on my business." I run Stivers Nursery. It's been run at Stivers Nursery for years. I said, "If they close that street off, what's it going to do to some of my traffic flow?" And he said, "Well, that's not a done deal." And I said, "Fine, but is it a possibility?" He's like, "Yeah, well, you know, maybe, maybe not." And I said, "Okay, but I would like to know." But that wasn't done, but sure enough, two years later, they did close the street off and they put a bike trail. And they also closed off 16th Avenue. So, I think at that time, it would have made a big difference if I would have known too. So, I'm just saying, it's up to you. You are the next council here that I'm talking to. I've talked to some before on 17th Avenue, which was a big burden. The city did work with me. I did pay off all those assessments except the sewer, which I'm not using. I don't use much of the road that I paid $52,500 for. I use the first 300 feet. In fact, I believe the mayor probably uses that road, or that avenue more than I do on a daily basis because it's a dead end. So, it's a lot easier for me to go down 12th Street, otherwise I have to jockey all around. So, I'm not here to whine or complain. I got to sign up my shop, $5 for whining. So, I'm just pleading my case like everybody else. You guys have the choice to make, so thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Counsel, anything further?
Yeah, I think that, this is a tough one, right? Because nobody likes assessments. You know, so what I've been wrestling with in my head is what's fair? You know, I think there's real costs certainly that we, you know, took on in the 1980s, 1990s. And I do think, you know, I do believe that from a city staff standpoint, we've done the right things in terms of tracking the assessments. And so, you know, I don't think that says anything to do with the clerks or with Stevens up. I think we've done the right things. At the same time, 30 years is a long time. And I think we've heard enough stories of Realtors or title companies maybe not catching things, or people not knowing that an assessment is there. I don't know, you know, I think the struggle is that if we're doing this to recoup costs, a $19.89 is only worth 50 cents today. So, we're at best going to recoup half of our costs from that timeframe. Normally, we say that we need our money in 10 years maximum, and that's, and we've, you know, gone three times further than that. And so, you know, I think about the fiscal situation that the city's in compared to the proportionality of the individual residents, and it feels like it has a disproportionate impact on the resident. I get the desire to have some resolution, but I'd be more in favor of just dropping the assessments in general, knowing that, sure, we're going to take, you know, $100,000 or a little bit less than that of a cut. But I think we've had 30 years to try to get these dollars, and so it's tough to go in and try to get them today. I think if we do try to get the dollars, that we probably should figure out, you know, some type of an interest free or something like that. But I'd be in favor of just dropping the assessments in totality.
Anybody else comment? So, at this point, we need to entertain a motion to move it to, move some kind of, something to the meeting in July for the assessment for this, these long...
We can't make any other motions regarding this anyway right now, really?
No, can't really.
Okay, so I make a motion to move to July?
Just table it, move it to July, assessment hearing, right? Okay, there's a motion on the table to move it all as it is now to July, the meeting in July.
A second.
A second, Rebecca? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
It's a resolution, though, don't we need a roll call?
We'll do roll call anyway.
They prepared a, you actually did a motion, you didn't do a resolution to do the deferred improvements. You made a motion to table it to the next meeting, didn't you?
Can I interject again?
I have no idea.
Ann?
Ann, what are they actually approving tonight? Just the improvements itself, not the assessments, correct?
So, yeah, because this is a little bit different than our normal process, but we're still following the process. So, I just need technically a resolution ordering all of the improvements. So, yeah, so, and then we'll set later on in the meeting, because that's not a public hearing portion of it, then we'll set the final assessment hearing for July 6th.
And that would be the way we would decide.
The improvements have already been done.
Correct. So, you're just approving the improvements that were done.
Okay.
The next meeting in July that I think, what I'm hearing them say, and what I'm hearing some of you say, is when that motion happens.
Yes, okay, yeah, so we need a resolution.
Jason had me confused there for a minute, okay.
So, Joyce, you want to redo your, I guess it's a resolution to order the improvements. That were done about 30-some years ago. And then we'll, we'll just deal with the assessment part of it at the next July meeting. And with that as the resolution, you know, just do a roll call, Tom.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-1, Your Honor.
So, congratulations on your improvements. We'll worry about how to pay for it next meeting in July.
In July.
So, you can all come back or...
That'll be a public forum as well?
Hearing as well.
Yes, you'll get another letter from me at the end of next week. So, it'll be similar to the letter you received. It'll have the same amount on it. It'll have the date and the time for the next hearing.
And I'm assuming we...
I might further imperiorate you, but sorry, that's the way the process has to work.
The last thing I just wanted to say is thank you for allowing us to hold our opinions and feelings.
It's a...
That's the way this should work.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming and helping us to make decisions, so...
We get it, it's very unusual. So, I'm assuming that we could probably just go with item number six as the same resolution we just made for item number five.
So, move that resolution.
It's a public hearing, sir, we have to...
Oh, yes. Public hearing. Does anybody want to talk about the water improvements that were done 31 years ago?
Ditto.
Mr. Durbin?
Well, what I'm wondering, you say this is improvement for the gas, and she said that the water and sewer, and are you going to charge me another improvement for the water that's there that they didn't know about?
That's right.
So, we're going to have two assessments?
No.
This assessment...
Separate assessments because the Austin Utilities gets the water, the city gets the sewer.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I don't know if there's sewer there. All I know is there's a water shut off.
There's sewer that goes through the street. It's available on the street.
Well, they didn't even know the water sewer was there. They didn't have no way of marking it till I told them with the water, pointed the water shut off off.
Okay, well, thank you for pointing that out.
A little.
Okay.
All right, so with that, we have a motion in a second for number six as a resolution. Tom?
I don't think I have that motion or second yet.
Oh, thought we did.
Yeah, Jeff and Rebecca.
Jeff and Rebecca. I made the motion.
Rebecca seconded.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-1, Your Honor.
All right, and what's the meeting date for the 7th, for the next public hearing in July? What was it?
July 6th.
It's July 6th.
July 6th will be the assessment.
July 6th.
That's a Tuesday because Monday is the 4th of July holiday, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Just so everybody knows, it's on a Tuesday.
All right, well, thank you for your input, everybody. It's complicated, I get it, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item number seven, reviewing a tax abatement application from New Horizon Homes for a property at 1303 18th Drive Northeast. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Some probably happier news here. We're seeing some good traction in the Nature's Ridge subdivision, several abatements this evening. The first one's at 1303 18th Drive Northeast. Estimated value is $369,000. It's been submitted in conformance with our tax abatement policy. This is a public hearing. Council action is requested to approve or deny the abatement.
Is anybody in the audience wish to speak on this matter? If not, counsel, questions or comments or looking for a resolution? So, move to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay, keeping going with the new homes. Item number eight, looking for a resolution to review the tax abatement application for New Horizon Homes for a property at 2013 14th Avenue Northeast. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Similarly, this one is in the Nature's Ridge subdivision. The following three are in Nature's Ridge 2. So, we're seeing some good traction again. This one's at $699,000 estimated value. This is a public hearing. Approve or deny is recommended.
Sounds like Councilmember Fisher's building a house with that kind of money. Resolution for number eight, please.
So, move.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a reviewing a tax abatement application for New Horizon Homes for a property at 2101 14th Avenue Northeast. Craig?
This estimated value is at $400,000 in the Nature's Ridge subdivision in conformance with our standing policy. Council action is requested to approve or deny, and this is a public hearing.
Okay, anybody here to speak on this matter? Counsel, looking for a resolution? So, move to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay, item number 10, reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction for a property at 1404 20th Street Northeast. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. This one is estimated value of $330,000, around out our eventual tax base increase. This is a public hearing. It's in conformance with our standing policy.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Entertain a resolution, probably number 10. So, move the resolution. Second. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 11 is a public hearing for reviewing a cable franchise application from MetroNet Incorporated. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Tonight's an exciting night for the community. Folks may remember the Gig Austin Project as part of Austin Vision 2020. We've come a long way from that process and appreciate the legwork that has been done by, that was done by those folks. But we have a private cable franchise before the city tonight to extend fiber throughout the community and deliver on that promise that was talked about in Vision 2020, but through the private sector. We're excited about the opportunity for competition in the community and see where that might lead us, but improve our connectivity in the community and connections that we have as we're increasingly dependent on the internet and those things that go along with that. We have Brian Grogan with us this evening. He's been our franchise attorney that we've worked with. I'll turn it over to Mr. Grogan from here.
Mr. Grogan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, for the record, Brian Grogan with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett. I'm here tonight to present to you the applicant for a new cable franchise. I have a PowerPoint deck that I believe the city is going to put up that will help us walk through this presentation. And so, if that could, there it is. Bear with us for a minute as we bring that up. There we go. So, we'll start tonight on the next slide. If we could advance. And so, the procedure that we're going to follow, basically, we're reviewing the only application that was received by the city for a competitive cable franchise. The formal name of the company is CMN-RUS, Inc., but they do business as MetroNet. So, we're going to refer to them tonight in this presentation as MetroNet. And ultimately, your goal tonight, council members, is to consider approval of a resolution that would ultimately approve the qualifications of MetroNet to own and operate a cable system. What's important to emphasize is that we're not deciding whether to grant a franchise tonight. By state law, that has to wait at least seven days between the consideration of the application and the ultimate grant of a franchise. So, that will have to wait to the next city council meeting. This entire procedure that I'm going to describe tonight is right out of state law. Whether or not we agree that all of these steps must be undertaken, the fact is, we have to follow state law when considering the grant of a franchise. So, that's what I'm going to walk you through. Next slide, please. So, a little background about the Federal Cable Act. One of the purposes of the Cable Act is to promote competition in the communications industry and minimize unnecessary economic burdens on cable systems. Next slide. The franchising authority in this case is you as the city and city council members, and you are authorized to award one or more cable franchises. You can't grant an exclusive franchise, and you can't unreasonably refuse to award a competitive franchise. So, your standard of review that you're looking to tonight is one of, you cannot act in an unreasonable manner, which is a standard that you're quite accustomed to in the sense that we're always held to a standard of reasonableness as we make these decisions. Next slide. So, we have these Minnesota statutes in play, and one of them requires that we maintain a level playing field between the incumbent cable operator, which in this case is Charter Communications, doing business of spectrum, and the new applicant, MetroNet. So, as we look to the franchise for the next council meeting, well, staff is making certain that the contract itself... that the contract itself that we will ultimately put in front of you does not grant a more favorable or less burdensome set of obligations to any new company as compared to those that we currently have in place with Charter. Next slide. I've also just listed for you in here the charter level playing field arrangement, which basically says that you as a city have agreed that you would not allow a company to compete on more favorable terms, and in the event that you were to grant a more favorable franchise, you'd basically have to make the same provisions available to Charter so that the two could compete fairly in the marketplace. And again, we're going to look more closely at that franchise in the next council meeting. Next slide, please. So the Minnesota statutes require that the city publish each week for two successive weeks a notice in your local newspaper, which we did complete. Next slide. We published that in early May at the time of the, let's move to the next slide. We're just simply walking you through the steps that staff has undertaken. As of May twenty-fifth, that was the closing date, only one application was received, and that was from MetroNet. Tonight, we're completing the final element of the state statute, which is to hold a public hearing to consider that application. Next slide. I think we've probably covered this already as well, so in the interest of moving your meeting forward, we'll go to the next slide. So now we'll get to the meat of the applicant here. The applicant, as I described, is doing business as MetroNet. Their parent company is MetroNet Holdings LLC, and that is the company that we substantially looked at as it relates to the technical, legal, and financial qualifications of the applicant. Next slide. So we'll start with legal qualifications. This company is an Indiana corporation. They are licensed to do business in Minnesota. We have verified with this Minnesota Secretary of State that they are in good standing, and there is no impediment to them providing cable and communication services in the state and in the city of Austin. Next. Then we look to technical qualifications. Again, based in Indiana, they are a company that provides cable, internet, telephone service to the extent folks want telecommunications service. And they operate in a number of different communities, Florida, Iowa, Kentucky. You can see the communities listed there. They also have statewide franchises in a number of states. Indiana and Illinois are two examples where they serve a number of communities. The punchline here is this is not MetroNet's first foray into providing cable services. They are a fairly experienced company, as evidenced by the areas in which they do business. Next slide. What they're proposing to build for Austin is a fiber-to-the-premise system. This is different than a traditional historical cable operator where they did something called a hybrid coax system, where they would build fiber down certain portions of the city and then use coaxial cable from there. In this case, because this company is building from scratch, they're putting fiber virtually to the household. So you will have basically a bigger pipe coming down to the, each particular home, which gives them considerable amount of bandwidth. And that's not to suggest anything negative about your existing cable operator's system. It's simply a newer technology that's known as a FTP service delivery platform. They will use internet protocol to provide their bandwidth. That simply means they'll be running their signals over the internet, and what that means is there is no limitation on the number of channels that they can provide. They bring in one channel at a time into your house near instantaneous switching, but means that literally there is no cap on the amount of different channels that they could bring in. Once they are in a home, they would then deliver the signal wirelessly, which is a platform that many capable operators utilize today. They would base, receive their content from a main head end that they would have in Indiana, and then they would transport that via long-haul fiber optics to get to the city and then implement the local programming at that point, and then distribute it off to the customers. Next slide. The hardest part when you review the qualifications of an applicant is financial, and the reason it's difficult is because there is no particular federal standard that we can look to to say, if you match these particular elements, you're then deemed to be a qualified provider. Like any financial qualification standards, there's a great deal of subjectivity about what it means to have sufficient financial resources to build the system. We've provided a fairly detailed analysis in the written report that's in your packet tonight, giving you at least a snapshot of their balance sheet and financial information. Ultimately, we did look at their financial statements, and moving to the next slide. We basically have come to the conclusion that there is no basis on which the city could deny this application due to a lack of financial qualifications. I recognize that that's stated in the reverse. You would be looking for basically a stamp of approval that we would guarantee their financial success. Of course, we can't do that. There are all kinds of wild cards, as we've all witnessed this last year with the pandemic, that could adversely affect any company's business, but based on what they have presented, there's no reason to deny they have sufficient resources to construct the system and to move forward. How they execute the business plan would be something that the future will tell us. Next slide. So before you tonight, then, in conclusion, you have a resolution, and what that resolution does is it says that we, the city council for Austin, find that MetroNet possesses the requisite legal, technical, financial qualifications to own and operate a cable system. Should the council determine to adopt that resolution, staff will then bring back to you at your next meeting a cable franchise and any additional documentation that you'll need for consideration into determining whether to award them the right to do business in your community. And with that, I believe that's the final substantive slide. I'll certainly stand for any questions the council may have.
Counsel?
I have a couple of questions, if I may. Do we know when this, when the goal is to complete this if approved, and will it run to all of the households within Austin?
Would you like, are these questions directed to me, Mayor, or would you prefer staff answer these?
If you can answer them.
Whoever's best.
That's great, certainly. So a lot of the issues I suspect we're going to start talking about tonight will actually be contained in the cable franchise, which you'll be receiving in the next packet, but the concept is that they have committed to provide in the neighborhood of an eighty-five percent penetration to the residents in the community. However, there are some caveats. Those would be, for example, folks that are living in apartment buildings or condominium buildings. If those buildings, the landlord already has what is in essence an exclusive arrangement for the provision of wiring in that building and the ability to serve tenants, MetroNet will not then be constructing to that building because there's no ability for them to gain customers. They're already chosen by the, or served by the incumbent operator, and that's one really of gaining access to the property from the landowner. So there are some caveats to that. Those would be spelled out in the contract. And you may say, well, why not a hundred percent? Why a lower percentage? And frankly, what we're pleased about here is the commitment that this competitive operator has put down. I'll give you an example that about fifty different franchises were granted over the last five years in the Twin Cities market to what is the old US West or Quest, and it was known as CenturyLink. Now it's known as Lunam. They've changed their name a few times. But they, when they came in and pitched a franchise to Minneapolis or St. Paul or Bloomington, they committed to provide competition in fifteen, that's one-five percent of the households, and then to the extent their business plan were successful, they would expand service beyond that. Here we have an operator that's almost the exact reverse and is committing a much more substantial percentage, and then at that point, letting the marketplace drive these operators to serve those remaining households.
Thanks, that's perfect. Very excited to see this come before the council.
Do we have an idea from other communities that they've moved into what's happened with like pricing and service levels? I mean, I would assume that increased competition will benefit cable and internet consumers, right?
A few years back, I represented the city of Rochester, and MetroNet came in and provided competition. Rochester's also served by Spectrum. Keep in mind, we're talking here about only a cable franchise, and so there is a, there's a limited amount that competition can do to reduce the pricing when a company like ESPN or Discovery or, you know, you name it, CNN, Fox, whichever content you're looking to watch, those companies charge Spectrum and MetroNet a carrying fee, right? It could be a dollar for the big sports channels, Big Ten Network, et cetera. It can be double-digit dollars to receive that content. So there's only so much that head-to-head competition can do to reduce cable prices. But where the benefit really comes in is on the broadband side. Folks are looking to increase broadband speeds and see prices reduce. There's much more fluidity in the marketplace among these providers. They certainly make more money off of that because that is a growing industry, whereas cable is at least a flat, slightly decreasing industry due to over-the-top video, Netflix, et cetera. But the punchline for that question is you will see improvements in greater offerings, greater speeds, and better pricing as it relates to the broadband side of the marketplace. I would not bank on that necessarily on the cable side, however, there could be greater flexibility in how the products are offered. It's just the marketplace is a little bit more restrained in the cable world.
Makes total sense. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Craig, you have something?
Yeah, just did want to also introduce John Jensen, who's with MetroNet. If he had any comments or anything that we missed that you wanted to provide from MetroNet's standpoint, I think at the construction meeting to answer Councilmember Posma's question on build-out, I think they were committed to fall of 2022. I think we'll probably exceed that actual conclusion date, but that's what we'd kind of talked about in the construction meeting. But, Mr. Jensen, did you have anything to add?
No, not really. Steve Moore is the project manager of the state of Minnesota. I'm in case there was some construction questions brought him. I was actually part of the 2020 edition when I was with Jett and War, so I've been around looking at this for a long time, which is pretty exciting. But just if you had any questions, we just figured we'd be here tonight.
Thank you.
From start to finish, what does a project like that look like? How much time?
It all depends on poll applications, you know, we're dealing. The longest time period for construction is usually the poll applications, and since we're dealing with Austin Public Utilities, they'll probably be faster than dealing with a larger Excel or a power company where their timeframes could be a hundred and eighty days before they review an application. We're anticipating, we had our permit kickoff meeting with the administration last week or two weeks ago. We're going to start submitting some permits to them to start reviewing, to see how long that process takes. Gradually, it'll get quicker over time as we get acclimated to what they want to see and how we present the permit information, so it'll be a quick approval. We'll probably start with heavy underground areas, and then as we work through the poll permit process, then we'll start connecting everything to the ring, which ties back into our hut, you know, in downtown Austin. So you'll see a gentle start, and then it'll ramp up. We want to try to get as much underground in as we can before winter so we can concentrate on aerial in the winter, and then we'll be able to activate services to more people.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing, anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Otherwise, the counselors, if there's other questions, we'll entertain them, or if you want someone else to make a resolution, item number eleven.
Make a resolution to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. That'll be exciting for the community. Thank you for appearing, and thank you, Mr. Grogan, for your work, too. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number twelve, receiving bids for the Fourth Street and Third Avenue Northwest Street improvements. Stephen?
Yes, so council is aware of this project that we've been working on for quite some time to make improvements around the high schools in Austin, both Pacelli and Austin High. So we have taken bids for this project, and we had two bidders on the project with Doyle Connor Company being the low bidder, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifteen cents. There are some costs here that will be billed back to the high school for some decorative street lighting that will occur, but with that, funds for this project will be paid for with our local state aid account and doing both, and then also our local funds, as we do have some storm sewer work associated with this, and Third Avenue is a non-state aid roadway, so we will use local funds for that portion of work on Third Avenue. So with that, we would recommend awarding this project to Doyle Connor Company. Work we anticipate would occur in July and into early August with the goal to have everything completed before school begins. School starts a little bit earlier this year for us, starts before Labor Day, so we'll be working with that as our goal in mind, and it will be a bit impactful with Fourth Street. We will have some closures on Fourth Street during the construction project to get the work completed, but unless anyone has any questions, we'd recommend Doyle Connor for this project.
Counsel? If no questions, we'll entertain a resolution, item number twelve. So moved the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number thirteen, under petitions and requests, is setting final assessment hearing on proposed sanitary sewer and water assessments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number fourteen is a motion and ordinance, reviewing rezoning ordinance, item A for preparation of the ordinance. Holly?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On the, at the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a request to rezone property from KO Management LLC. The KO wishes to develop the property as a storage facility. The petitioners requested that the property be rezoned from R1 single-family, which was the default that it was annexed in as, to an I-1 light industrial district, and to amend the future land use plan from low-density residential to industrial. The Planning Commission, with seven members present, recommends approval of the rezoning request by seven ayes and zero nays. They found that the use is compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning, and that there are no significant impacts anticipated with regard to the existing infrastructure and surrounding environment. The owner to the north, who has a mixed-use residential and commercial, did have some questions about the site, basically lighting, and then just how the, I guess, the wildlife existing in the area would travel through there once the development was done. Those questions were, I guess, discussed, and the planning commission considered them. And I can go into more detail if you like, but the area is basically commercial to the south and the light industrial zoning as well.
Thank you, Holly. Any questions? I'm looking for a motion for item number A. So moved.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Okay, here's, fourteen B is for adoption and publication of the ordinance. Okay, here's 14B is for adoption and publication of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Is that like a resolution then, Tom? Roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 15, reviewing an ordinance for the use of bow and arrow in the city limits. McKee? Comment?
Yeah, this would just be an update to allow that to happen under our current ordinance. It's been published and ready to be voted in.
Okay. And the way it's written is only from certain waterways from about, not sure. All those conditions will be in play, and we've talked about it at other work sessions. So looking for a motion for preparing of the ordinance on 15A. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here's 15B, prepare the adoption and publication of the ordinance. So moved. Second. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven, or ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. The following are donations to the city under 16. $5,000 gift from SEMCAC for the Wallmobile Metal Lab and show at the Fourth Avenue Fest. $385 donation from the Austin Morning Lions Club for the Bike Club. $250 donation from Gareth Hiteh to the Bike Club. $100 from Gary Oscar to the Parks. $500 from Bleda Schindler to the Bike Club. $125 from Bob Tomasco, donation for unused vets rental, and $300 from the Austin Audubon Society for Summer Scholarship Program. With those donations, need a resolution to accept. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 17, approving a wastewater treatment plant bonding request. Stephen?
Yes, it's that time of year again. We're looking forward to upcoming bonding bill, hopefully in the 2022 session. And starting that process now, as you all may recall, we did put in a request for the 2020 bonding bill. And late in that process, we were awarded $7.45 million as part of that 2020 bonding bill. That is going toward our engineering, design, and construction costs. We had looked at a larger request than that, so we're going back to the table again with a $13 million request toward the construction project for bonding dollars. And with our application for that, we need a resolution to include with all of our submittal documents. So at this time, we would recommend council approve the attached resolution supporting this $13 million state bonding request for these improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? I'm looking for a resolution number 18. I'm sorry, 17? So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 18 is a resolution clearing the property at 711 Oakland Avenue West to hazard a structure. So moved. Second. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number 19 is a motion appointing Tim Rujek to the Port Authority Board, term expiring December 31, 2024. A little background, Craig Clark and I met with Jerry McCarthy as a courtesy from the chair of the board, the Port Authority anyway, and asking for comment. His first comment to us was, please give us somebody that's youthful. Tim Rujek's the youngest person I know at 41 years old, so he accepted onto the board and his term will be from current to December 31, 2024. Also want to recognize and will do it more formally at our next council meeting, hopefully is with Jerry Morfield's term. He decided to retire off the Port Authority and he's been on there since its inception in 1987. So we talk about lifetime commitment and the values he's added. He's added what sports done over the course of the time is certainly amazing. So we will have Jerry McCarthy and whoever else wants to show up at the Port Authority to a council meeting here to honor Mr. Morfield the right way. So anyway, looking for with that background, a motion for item number 19. So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here's a motion for item number 20 in support of the human rights statement by the Austin Human Rights Commission, and I'll read the statement. "We stand in solidarity with all people seeking social justice. Racism, systemic violence, and the dehumanization forces of oppression, powerlessness, and white supremacy have eroded the very fabric of humanity, which ideally binds our side together. We are at a historic moment in the pursuit of justice, fairness, and equity for all people. We must seize this moment and work even harder towards changes in all institutions. Being silent is not an option, and we actively want to add our voices to this ongoing plea for change. The Austin Human Rights Commission is built on enduring values that promotes human dignity and diversity, respect, the attainment of quality of life for all, empowerment, integrity, social justice advocacy, equity, and inclusion. Our hope in our work as a City of Austin Commission is to do everything in our power to elevate the concerns and voices of those who for so long have been silenced, oppressed, and ignored. As the Austin Human Rights Commission, we believe this statement supporting social justice aligns with our missions, our mission to cultivate a just and inclusive community where diversity is valued and human rights are respected." So with that said, looking for a motion for item number 20. So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We have, item number 21, the addition. Stephen, approving engineering design services with SEH, a replacement of an equalization digester cover. The failure of the digester cover, we can't have that.
That is correct. And this is a little bit different for the treatment plan. We've been talking so much about the big project that's coming up. This is actually, will be work on some existing infrastructure that will stay as part of the project. So that's, we're not going to be throwing this money away at something that's going to be replaced in a couple of years, but this tankage will remain in use during and after the upcoming project. There were, we have two 1.5 million gallon equalization digesters. They were built 20 years ago in 2001. And this past winter, we had a failure of one of the lids. And after looking into it more, looking at the failure, looking at the damage that it has caused, the decision has been made to move forward with replacement of that cover. And to start that process, to develop plans and specifications, we've received a proposal from SEH to develop those documents, evaluate what needs to be done, put together all those necessary specifications for this type of lid and make it available to go out for bids. The cost of this is $42,020. And the goal of the project is to have things ready for a late fall, early winter bid. And then we can award a contract to a contractor, get them ordering their materials and in preparation for our summer 2022 project. We estimate the actual reconstruction of the cover is about 1.5 million, but that will be, we'll bring it up later date. So right now, we would request council approve extending a contract to SEH in the amount of $42,020, with the cost for this project coming from our industrial wastewater treatment plant funds.
Okay. Questions, counsel? If not, looking for a resolution, Brad number 21? So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? Elaine, you're it. No comment. Okay. We also have with us our honorary council member, Christopher Moore. Christopher, did you choose to make any comments tonight or observations? We're good? Well, thanks for your attendance. Reports and recommendations, or recommendations. Craig?
Yes, Fourth Avenue Fest, everybody mark your calendar for Wednesday, June 16 at Horace Austin Park. Whole list of festivities that'll be taking place there. It's kind of our community summer kickoff, so that should be exciting, hell, rain or shine. So please plan to attend and join with our community. We did meet with Senator Dornick, Representative Mueller, to discuss housing issues. Senator Dornick did a follow-up visit as we drove through the town, so he got a better idea of what specific locations we're talking about when we have these discussions. So he found that helpful. It's nice to have them continue to be engaged on the topic. We did receive the development agreement from the Stensel Group on the YMCA project, and we also have the signed purchase agreement with the YMCA, so that one's moving forward nicely. Stephen, Craig Byram, and Julie Kleinfeldter also have items from staff as well.
Oh, Stephen, you're, let's go with Julie. Let's go with Julie. Sorry, bud.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. We have a lot going on here coming up in the next couple of weeks. A few things I just wanted to mention. Summer reading kicks off next Monday, the 14th. From noon to 5:00 PM, we'll be out on the west side of the building, getting that started. The theme this year is reading colors your world. So bring your kiddos out and get them signed up for the summer reading program. And then as Mr. Clark mentioned, we have Fourth Avenue Fest on June 16 in the evening. But earlier that day at 1 o'clock, the Jollipops are going to be doing a kickoff concert for kids at the park in between the library and the playground there and the pool. So bring the kids out for that at 1 o'clock. We will also be participating in the Pride Pavilion at Fourth Avenue Fest, so look for the library booth there. The Social Justice Book Club meets on the 17th at 6:00 PM. And then we'll have more information coming soon. But June 30, I just want everyone to save the date from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The library's going to have a big party. It's the library building's 25th anniversary. It doesn't feel like it can possibly be 25 years old, but the building is 25 years old and we'll be having a party out in the park. Thank you.
Can't imagine the party of a bunch of librarians.
Very quiet party.
I must attend that, Julie. Thank you.
We'll have really good cupcakes and music.
I'm sure. Thank you. All right, Mr. Lang, what do you have?
Three quick items for you. We are going to be starting up our sun pump inspection program again. We delayed it last year with the pandemic, but we're going to be starting it up here in July. So for all of us out in the outer southwest area, you'll be getting notices from the city and for times to schedule your sun pump inspection. And that, those timeframes will likely continue July through October to get through the sun pump inspection program there in the outer southwest. In addition, at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward for you bids for 31st Street Southwest. This is a joint city-county project that we've been working on for the realignment of 31st Street Southwest. Our city portion has been to be responsible for a storm sewer, getting storm sewer up to 31st Street, some bonding, also some work that has already occurred with getting property owners on board for the proposed new alignment. So we'll be bringing those costs forward for council to review and hopefully approve at the next council meeting. If you, if anyone has any questions about that project, feel free to reach out to me. I can get you more information about it so that you feel comfortable with the information that's coming forward at the next meeting on that project. And then the last item is, as we look to wind down our flood mitigation efforts here in the city, we've talked at recent meetings about how the Watershed District has been a huge partner in water flow coming to Austin. And this, again, another thing that we wanted to do last summer was to get council out to show you three or four of the big projects that the Watershed has been working on to slow water down and hold water upstream of Austin. I was just at another one last week and it was very impressive with the volume of water that you can kind of picture being held back by one of these reservoir areas. And so we'd like to get council, if you're interested, out to see some of these areas and try to help you visualize and recognize how all of these work together with these catchment areas upstream, our flood control measures here in town, and how it's a really combined system. So we'll work with Ann, the clerk's office, to get some dates out to council members to see if we can get you, if you're interested, to see some of these structures. There, a lot of them, we have to drive down dirt roads to get to, not gravel roads, but actually dirt roads, farm field roads. So it might be kind of short notice. We've been fairly dry, so it's easy to get these. But if we'd have a rain, we'd likely have to cancel our event. So it may be short notice that we try to schedule some of these things. But let us know if you're interested. We'll be getting that information out and try to get you guys out to see a visual on what's being done out there to protect Austin. That is all I have.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm wondering if Mr. Obala has the right footwear for walking down a dirt road. Yeah, we got, can get some slip-ons or something for you.
Multi-colored boots?
All right.
Thank you. Recently, I have been providing some guidance to members of the staff about commissions and boards and other sundry groups that meet on behalf of the city that are governed by public open meetings laws, just like you folks are, about what we should be planning for or expecting as we move more and more towards, hopefully, normalcy. As you know, or maybe need to be reminded, last spring, the spring of 2020, when things were ramping up from the pandemic and the governor first declared the statewide state of emergency, that authorized public groups like yourselves to employ remote meeting technology under a statute specifically tailored to times when it wouldn't be practical or prudent to bring the group together because of health concerns due to a pandemic. Yes, we do have a statute that's specific in Minnesota, and that's what you've been doing for the last year. For some of that period of time, most of the council was appearing by Zoom. Other times, just half of the council was appearing by Zoom. And so it's really nice to see everyone back here live again. Because Zoom was specifically allowed under a statute that allows us to do that when we're afraid to get together due to a pandemic, we should start thinking about when Zoom is going to no longer be an option. And for this group, there may be a distinction or need for clarity. The law requires the public officials to be here. It does not necessarily allow the members, or require the members of the staff to be here. So in talking about whether Zoom is an option, it says rules for you and then there's rules for everyone else. We can decide over the long term whether it's efficient for staff to continue to be by Zoom or whether they should be here live. Historically, they used to be. But this is kind of working out pretty well. But the law doesn't require us to do one or the other. It's just sort of what makes sense. The law requires you all to come together live. And the idea behind that is constituents should be able to look you in the eye. Constituents should be able to watch you debate topics. Constituents should be able to see you make your votes. Constituents should be able to get up and speak to you and not be hindered by distance or technology concerns. So the statewide emergency continues because the governor renews that every 30 days around the 14th of the month. Just renewed that on May 14. We'll see if he renews it again on June 14. He may, he may not. But the reality is the concerns about whether this is safe to come together continue to drop even if the emergency status stays in place. So at some point, it'll become very difficult to defend the use of Zoom under an argument that we're doing so because we're afraid of the pandemic. We're all here today, not experiencing a lot of fear. So if things continue to be as good as they are right now, I would suggest to you it's hard to defend Zoom. So some have asked, and perhaps more on boards and commissions than necessarily on this council, but some have asked, well, we're kind of fond of sometimes zooming in from home or zooming in from when we're on the road or zooming in for whatever other reason occasionally. Could we keep that option open? And the short answer to that is, is no. The long answer is it's technically allowed, but in order to make it work, you would have to tell us exactly where you are. We would have to publish exactly where you are. And we'd have to publish that as part of the notice to invite the public to come exactly where you are. And then if you're using your screen, you would have to, if practical, share your screen with the public. If they did show it to you. with the public if they did show up at your house and you welcomed them into your dining room or living room and, you know, pulled up another lazy boy next to it. So from a practical sense, it, it really doesn't work. I think that part of the statute is designed for northern counties that are really large, and they might have officials from long distances, so they might set up public places where that's where constituents go if they live in the north part of the county and in other locations where constituents go if they're in the south. And the officials who are from those two areas go to those same locations. So again, the constituents and the people they've elected are all in the same room, talking to each other, but they can still operate in a large geographic area. It's not really designed for, I want to do this from home, or I want to do this from a hotel where I'm traveling from. Those sorts of things unfortunately, you know, aren't allowed under the statute. So when this happens, or you should just assume this is happening, that we are moving towards all live participation for governing officials. And I want to point out that historically, we have periodically received that same request way before the pandemic, way before even Zoom was something that we all were comfortable with, about appearing by telephone or appearing by some other means, by council people who travel a lot. And historically, we have always given this exact same answer, which is, no, it just doesn't work. And so we have discouraged it and, and pointed out that it would be very practically difficult to do it in most instances. I don't believe that this applies to anyone here, but there are provisions for folks who are actively serving in the military or called away for reserve training during a meeting or something. We can make some accommodations for that because the law does provide specific carve-outs for folks in those situations. But generally speaking, you have to be here live, and I would encourage you just to start behaving that way because I don't know that we'll get a lot of notice whether or not the governor renews it on June fourteenth, and we might have put out notices for that meeting anyway that, that might follow that. And so it is going to be a kind of a hit the ground running because our Zoom authority that we did locally was until the governor's statewide emergency ends, boom, then we've already set that in motion. Okay? Any questions at all about that? Otherwise, I thought the public might be interested. I thought you all might be interested in what options are and aren't available.
Thank you. Thanks, Craig. All right, moving on to reports and recommendations from city council members. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Obala?
Well, for, we visited for Austin H R A. So we visited the house, the new house built, I think, last two weeks ago. It's really awesome. So the board, they're still discussing about when to release the, the price and all that. So, but we took a tour there. That's awesome. Whoever will buy that will be lucky, so nice neighbor. So that's all what I have from H R A. So maybe council spokesman will add something to that.
It is a nice partnership between Riverland and the H R A, and it, one of what, it's going to be eight, eight homes built out there, I believe. So yeah, it's very excellent. Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mike?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the folks who set up the Neighborhood Watch